All right, we're going to call this meeting in order. Please join me in the flag salute.
Okay, roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda? Any changes, deletions, or additions? I'm hearing it.
Oh, uh, oh, yes. Can we close in memory of the Thousand Oaks victims?
Of who?
The victims of Thousand Oaks.
Okay. Any other thing?
Is that what you were going to say?
It was.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you Madison.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, we have an operating agenda. So first up is oral communications for any item that is not on the agenda. I don't have any slips. Does anybody wish to address the council for any item not on the agenda? Not seeing any takers. Let's get to the fun part. Okay. First up is a presentation for Volunteer of the Year. Okay, so we have a little video tribute. Oh, you would have to put me in there, huh? Okay, our volunteer of the year is Nancy Coleman. And Nancy, you're not surprised tonight, like you were at the Community Day in the Park, playing with your little one there. So let me read this proclamation. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizing Nancy Coleman for her volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas serving as a co-founder of the BEST PTO and initiating many school fundraising efforts, and whereas Nancy Coleman is known throughout the community for her tireless efforts and devotion to establishing an organization that has become a perfect fit for the community. And whereas she facilitated community forums, attended meetings of similar organizations in neighboring communities, networked, and formed a governing board for the organization. And whereas without her vision, perseverance, and dedication, Brisbane Village Helping Hands would not exist today. And whereas she helps to ensure that people can age in place and remain connected to their community by allowing neighbors to help neighbors. And whereas Nancy always extends a helping hand and acts with the purpose of community in mind while giving selflessly to others. Now therefore, it be resolved that after many years of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Nancy Coleman for her tireless spirit, great energy, and passion for serving others. Many congratulations to Nancy on being named Volunteer of the Year. Nancy, we're going to give you this proclamation here, and then if you like, we'll give you a rebuttal.[222.59][222.59](Laughter).
I just want to say a couple of words. First of all, thank you very much for this honor. And on behalf of the board volunteers and members of Brisbane Village Helping Hands, thank you for your recognition of the services that the village has provided to our community. We're very grateful for the invaluable, ongoing generous support of the council and all the city staff and the Brisbane Lions Club without which the village could not exist today. A special thanks to the village's generous volunteers and a big thank you to the village's hard-working and dedicated board members I've had the pleasure of collaborating with in creating and maintaining Brisbane Village Helping Hands. This honor really belongs to all of us. I'd like to recognize past board members Jane Kinsler, who sadly passed away before the village became operational, Jim Skeels and Wendy Ricks, and current board members Sherri Goodwin, Cece Herman, Karen Latham, here in the audience tonight, Elaine Porter, Tony Press, and Cindy Rudolph. And finally, I would be remiss not to mention the contributions of vision and energy that the late Moira Lucas made to this project at its very beginnings. Moira, we remember you and we miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you Nancy. Okay, up next, they have a Mary- uh, Mary- uh, Mayor Oriel Accommodation Awards for the Arts. And we have three very special artists in Brisbane. Actually, we got numerous special artists in Brisbane, but there's three that we want to recognize tonight. And mainly because the three of them, like all artists generally get the community involved, but these three particularly really get the community involved and create really a bonding network. And I really wish to recognize them for that, even though they've been recognized in the past. We like to keep that connection and they do it for passion, not for recognition, and that's the most important thing. And, you know, we have a wonderful artist doing the filmmaking tonight in Keith Moreau, but we're not recognizing Keith tonight, but we do have-[375.03][375.03](Laughter). Well, I just recognized, yes. So I, you know, have some little bios that I would like to read on each artist. I think it's worthy of maybe some folks who aren't here, who may be listening, to kind of get to know a little bit about their background. So the first commendation that I'm going to give is to Kevin Friar. And Kevin Friar makes harpsichords, in case you don't know, okay? Kevin moved from the Midwest to San Francisco in 1976 to study at the San Francisco Conservatory of Music. He began making harpsichords in 1980 and became a professional instrument maker in 1984. He has been located at his current studio in the Bayview District of San Francisco since 1990. In addition to building harpsichords on commissions, he provides rental and tuning services for arts organizations, including Carmel Bach Festival, Music at Menlo, San Francisco Opera, San Francisco Ballet, and Music at Cole Mansion. In Kevin's career, he has two apprentices, Ron Nakashima and Steve Rennecker, who have gone on to build instruments in their own studios. Further activities include repair and rebuilding of harpsichords, technician work for recording projects, and instrument appraisals. He has built over 70 harpsichords, including the building traditions of South German 17th Century French, Italian, and early 18th Century Builders from Lyon. Or I guess Lyon, that's how you pronounce it, so. However, Friar is best known for his instruments based on the 17th Century Flemish tradition of the Rutgers family. He frequently collaborates with artists such as Adrian Card and Millicent Tompkins to include historically-based decorative features such as soundboard painting and lid paintings. Kevin moved to San Francisco to Brisbane in 1997. In 2000, as Mission Blue Center was nearing completion, he recognized the potential of the facility as an ideal location for live chamber music. In 2003, after two trial concerts, he founded Live at Mission Blue. After 15 years, over 70 performances, this concert series has proven the value of live concerts as an activity that builds community. A strong advocate for the arts, Mr. Friar was appointed to the Brisbane Parks and Recreation Commission in 2011 to explore the idea of a public arts ordinance. Working with commissioners, staff, and the city council, the ordinance passed in 2014. This ordinance will ensure an arts component as part of development in Brisbane. Kevin is also an amateur photographer and enjoys photographing Brisbane events and landscapes as part of an ongoing study of a unique and vibrant community. This picture is also on the 50th anniversary of our history book. That's Kevin's picture. So Kevin, come on forward. I want to commend you for founding Live at Mission Blue and for work fostering community culture, exchanges through live chamber music, and the arts. And you may have a rebuttal too, if you like.
Well, thank you, and thank you for this commendation. I really didn't prepare much to say, except that I think we do live in a great community that supports the arts, and I'm honored to be here along with my fellow colleagues in the arts receiving this award tonight, so thank you.
Thank you Kevin. Next up, we have Beth Grossman. Okay, and I'm going to read the commendation first. So this is on behalf of the City of Brisbane on this date. I recommend Brisbane artist Beth Grossman for founding the Brisbane Artists Evening of Sharing and Art Sharing, and for her work fostering and strengthening community through art and participatory performance. I'm having problems tonight, and it's okay. Let me read Beth's biography. Beth Grossman uses art and participatory performance as a creative force to stimulate conversation and focus attention on environmental issues, interpretation of history, and civic engagement, all aimed at raising awareness, building community, and encouraging public participation. Based in the Brisbane, California, she has collaborated internationally with individuals, communities, local governments, corporations, universities, nonprofits, and museums in the U.S., Russia, China, Italy, Germany, Finland, Norway, and Mexico. She has been awarded grants from the Jerome Foundation, the Avery Arts Foundation, the Peninsula Community Foundation, the Puffin Foundation, the Peninsula Community Foundation, and the Paulette Goodard Foundation, among others. Beth Grossman is known for her arts leadership and organizing in Brisbane. She is the founder of the Brisbane's Creative Community Bimonthly Artist Salons in Brisbane from 2002 to 2007. She is the founder of Block by Block Artists and Residents Project, a pilot program in the City of Brisbane since 2016 to the present. In this individually-designed program, creative people become self-appointed artists and residents in their own communities. She is the founder, organizer, and emcee of the annual Brisbane Artist Sharing Evening since 2002. The annual Brisbane Artist Evening Art Sharing provides local artists the opportunity to share their creative work with our community. Each year, 15 artists of all genres, including visual art, performance, creative writing, dance, music, or film, showcase their talents in their latest works. At the intermission, the city hosts a reception where citizens can interact with local artists. Beth has received a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Minnesota and a Master of Arts degree in the Performance Studies from New York University Tisch School of the Arts. So Beth, come on forward.
I just want to say thank you for this award, and most of all for your continued support of the Brisbane Artist Evening of Sharing. We're going to have our 17th year this year, and I know that all the artists really appreciate your support and gives us a chance to share all of our newest creative endeavors with the community. And I also want to thank all the Brisbane artists that keep inspiring all of us, so thanks so much.
Thank you Beth. Our next artist is actually one of my favorite people. Okay, and this is going to be Camille Olivier Salmon. On behalf of the City of Brisbane on this date, I commend Brisbane artist Camille Olivier Salmon for founding the Brisbane Dance Workshop and her work fostering a strong community of artists for nearly 40 years through dance and theater programming. And also, I don't know if this is in the bio, but Camille and Carol Nelson actually designed the Mission Blue for the acoustics. As I recall, back then, you guys spent many, many hours to where you wanted it for acoustics and not electrics, you know? And Kevin, you really recognized that, and that was kind of a serendipitous thing for you to come along and, you know, recognize that and then do your program, because I remember that well. And so, you know, when you hear when somebody's talking on a microphone in Mission Blue and it's kind of like distorted and bouncing all over the place, well, that's because it's designed for acoustics and not the electronic transfer of sounds, so. Anyway, that's why it sounds so wonderful in the Mission Blue from the acoustics, so. Anyway, without further ado, Camille Olivier Salmon founded Brisbane Dance Workshop, which Madison was a part of, went through that program, a beloved community institution close to 40 years ago, and continues to be its artistic director. BDW has seen thousands of children come through its dance and theater programs, beginning as preschoolers and going all the way up to high school. Brisbane children have had the opportunity to explore creative, modern, and contemporary movement, tap, hip-hop, ballet, and theater with the highest caliber of Bay Area teaching artists, including a guest residency from the Axis Dance Company. A highlight of the Brisbane year is the annual series of the BDW's spring performances held each year at the Mission Blue Center. BDW also recommends its students for SF Arts Ed Players Musical Theater Program and Dance Missions Rural Brigade in San Francisco. Camille has been the catalyst for children to discover the passion and joy that exists in each of them when they are engaged in something that is both personal and communal. Camille has brought to BDW all the expertise that she garnered through her years as a dancer. As a young performer, Camille was awarded scholarships to study and perform at the American Dance Festival, a longstanding and honored institution. Camille received her Bachelor of Arts degree in choreography design, and she subsequently trained in New York with Martha Graham, Jose Limon, and Rudy Perez. She performed professionally with the Rudy Perez Dance Ensemble in New York and with Kadeka Dance for Kids and Sheila Zarigos in San Francisco. As a choreographer, Camille's work has been shown in Louisiana, New York, San Francisco, and the American Dance Festival. Camille has served as program director for San Francisco Arts Education Project for over 30 years. San Francisco Arts Ed is an award-winning, not-for-profit organization that places artists in residence in public schools. She is responsible for programming all of the SF Arts Ed's school residencies for running its exploration summer camps. Camille has also been a choreographer and associate director for SF Arts Players, a pre-professional children's musical theater company. She served on the Board of Trustees for the Brisbane School District for 12 years and was co-chair of SF Arts Providers Alliance, a coalition of arts providers and their allies promoting quality arts education in the Bay Area. She also served on the Leadership Committee for the California Arts Alliance and Advisory Board of Robert Moses Ken. Camille is currently a member of the Brisbane Public Art Advisory Committee. Camille, come on forward. And of course, we always love to hear from you.
Just quickly, I'd like to thank you for this honor. But I, as I've always said from the very beginning, I feel honored to be here, to be able to be in a community where everyone supports what we do, and what I do especially with children. So I want to thank you for being co-sponsors for all what we do, for having places for us to have classes, for letting us use Mission Blue, for producing our programs. I'd like to thank the Park and Rec for continually keeping on my case to make sure that the classes are up to date producing all of that. And not to mention the many members in the city and in the community who have served on our board. We have some present board members and past board members here this evening who have committed themselves in their love and their passion for these children as well. So thank you so very much. I appreciate this.
Thanks Camille. Okay, now back to business. Fun part's over, so. By the way, we won't be offended if you leave, but you are, you're most welcome to stay. This is, you know, the good business part of the city, okay? So that brings us to consent calendar, which is adopt city council minutes of October 18, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Brings us the public hearing, consider introduction of draft ordinance number 632, zoning amendment RZ 6-18. amend chapter 17.33 of title 17 zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code to modify the permitted operating hours for cannabis businesses. Staff report please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Last September, the council adopted an ordinance to allow certain cannabis businesses in Brisbane subject to certain performance and development standards and permitting processes. The council subsequently amended the standards by adopting a separate ordinance to eliminate a prohibition on cannabis businesses within a certain distance of schools and residences. And at the hearing last spring when that occurred, a prospective cannabis business applicant brought up the issue and the concern about the hours of operation for certain retail delivery operations and the hours of operation being a potential constraint. At that point, the council did direct staff to look at amending the hours of operation, and we did that, consulted with the police department, and proposing some changes to the hours. Essentially, deliveries are now prohibited after 7:00 p.m. They're allowed between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. In consultation with the police department, recommending some changes to allow for those kind of deliveries to occur between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. So that's really the substantive change, changing the hours from terminating at 7:00 p.m. to allowing them to operate until 10:00 p.m. The Planning Commission reviewed that requested amendment earlier this, or last month, and recommended adoption unanimously. But that, staff is recommending the council introduce ordinance 632, and I take any questions you might have.
Okay, council questions?
Yeah, I just have one for Chief Masia.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
Hi Chief. So the extended hours, do you have any concerns in regards to that?
No, we don't. I think initially when we brought the ordinance forward, we weren't really sure kind of what we would be dealing with, and as we were kind of weeding through the ordinance, I think that we're comfortable with those hours.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other council questions?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Now declare the public hearing open. Anybody who wishes to speak on the matter, please come forward, give us your name.
Even Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Rand Martin. I'm Vice President of Government Relations for Caliva. You may have heard of us. We are well on our way to opening up our operation on South Hill Drive, hopefully within the next three to four weeks at the outside. We came here today to encourage you to adopt this change. And I want to just leave you with three points to consider as you're thinking about it. Number one, clearly there's a business interest from our standpoint, so I'll put that aside and make sure that we're being upfront about that. But there is an interest to consumers as well, especially in the Bay Area, especially in the Peninsula where traffic is so bad. You're talking about people who are getting off work at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, not getting home in time to even place an order for retail delivery. It may surprise you to know that in our operation out of San Jose, that 24% of our orders are delivered to us or sent to us after 7:00 p.m. So there's quite a sizable number of consumers who are interested after that. The third point is actually probably from a public policy standpoint, the most important. I'm certainly not here to speak on behalf of your police department, but law enforcement across the state is really pushing cities to regulate as much as possible to get rid of the illicit traffic. I don't know if you'd be surprised to know that you can go on Craigslist right now and order illicit cannabis products to be delivered to your home, no matter where you live. The more you have regulated entities like Caliva who are doing that for you, for your residents, the less they will turn to the black market. And the more we can do that, the more we can eradicate the black market across the state. So for those three reasons, we encourage you to do it. We really appreciate your consideration, appreciated the Planning Commission's unanimous support for it a couple of weeks ago, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about how delivery actually operates on the ground. So thank you very much.
I have a question. What are your current hours in San Jose for delivery?
The same that you would have here, up until 10:00 p.m. Also, those are the state hours. The state regulations require us to complete deliveries by 10:00 p.m.
I see, okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you Rand.
Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else wish to speak on this matter? All two other people, okay. All right, if not, entertain a motion for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, council's pleasure.
So I am, I just, it's not even really a discussion. I just wanted to say that I like seeing the business come out of the shadows and that it's not just, you know, an underground business. It's taking California by storm, and I'm glad we're upfront on it, and I'm hoping that we can also, other cities had ballot measures for being able to tax the business in various forms. Even one, even cities that don't allow it have put taxes on the books. And I find that, you know, sort of the cart before the horse, and we jumped in there right, right at the beginning to try to work with these kind of businesses, and I would like us to move forward with also getting some of the economics onto the books too.
Agreed.
And that's not a discussion for tonight, but I would like to see that happen.
Agreed.
Okay, I take that as a motion, but anybody else?
I'll say again.
Yes, I'll take it as a motion.
All right, motion and second. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pose? Okay, very good. Phew, man, we better slow up.
(Laughter). You're firing the clerk, going so fast.
We have two minutes till the next meeting.
Haven't cleared the foyer out yet, so.
There's a party going on out there.
Oh yeah, yeah. Did we bring cake? Oh. All right, new business, consider adoption of resolution HA 2018-04, adopting amendments for the Brisbane First Time Homebuyer Loan Program. Staff report please.
Associate Planner Ayers will handle this item.
Okay.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Housing Authority Chair. So the resolution before you tonight is to update the Brisbane First Time Homebuyer Program, which was last updated in 2008, so just over 10 years ago. The program's history is discussed in detail in the agenda report, so I won't repeat it here, but generally the program offers first-time homebuyer loans in the form of a silent second mortgage to assist low and moderate income households who live, work, or have family in Brisbane to purchase a property in Brisbane. As a condition of receiving that loan, the program imposes resale restrictions on the properties to ensure the home is sold to low or moderate income households when it is sold in the future. Recently, the Housing Authority saw the resale of one of the properties that was issued a loan under this program, and as you're aware, we had, we spent a long time trying to find eligible purchasers of the property. However, you know, due to changes in the market, as well as some of the limitations in the program that are a little bit out of touch with current market practices, we were not successful in finding purchasers at that time. So we went to the drawing board and consulted with our affordable housing realtor to draft some amendments to our program to expand the eligibility for people to participate, specifically in the resale opportunity we have now, and then any future resales that come down the road. So the updates would include updating our terminology to reflect the fact that, of course, the redevelopment agency no longer exists. It's now the Housing Authority that administers this fund. We're also recommending adjusting the maximum purchase price of a property to be the median home sale in Brisbane rather than- home sale in Brisbane rather than the county. If data's not available for Brisbane, then it would default to the county's median home price. It would also clarify the appropriate property size or number of bedrooms based on the number of people in the household. That was not contained in our current program and is an important factor in eligibility. And then, the last recommendation is to adjust how we calculate the maximum affordable housing cost for certain segments of the low and moderate-income household brackets. So, consistent with state law, which does have quite strict calculation requirements for certain portions of those income brackets, and then we can, we have a little bit of wiggle room when it comes to higher earners, so we're recommending some increases there. So, after, if these program amendments are adopted, staff would, will anticipate moving forward to relist the property at one San Bruno Avenue this winter to hopefully find an eligible lower or moderate-income household to take this opportunity. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Council questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Terry.
We're not making any changes to the terms of resale or the calculations on allowable profits at all in this.
No. The term would remain forty-five years until a triggering event happens, and then the shared appreciation, its contingent interest essentially, would also be unchanged. It basically is based on how high incomes have risen from the time the loan was issued to the time the sale occurs. So, that would stay the same.
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't know if it's in here, but just curious. So, let's say that eventually this homeowner buys another piece of property and wants to make this unit, like a rental unit, is that prohibited?
That is prohibited, and that would be considered actually a violation of the resale agreement, and the loan would come due at that time, and we would then have to go through the resale process. So, that's prohibited, they have to reside in the unit.
What if they did short-term rentals? Like, if they did like Airbnb or something?
And weren't residing in the unit, and if...
I guess, if it was like two bed...
Yeah. Short-term rentals right now are prohibited, of course, too, but if you guys ever did legalize them, and this person then wanted to do short-term rentals within them but were still residing in the home...
Yeah.
That would be compliant, I believe, so they just need to reside in the home.
Would that get counted as income? Because there are like certain things that are prohibited, like foster care payments and like certain gifts, irregular gifts, some sort of like there are things in here, and what counts as income, would that be considered income at that point?
We don't reevaluate income once the loan's been issued and the property is purchased. We aren't revisiting necessarily every year to make sure they haven't gotten a raise and are no longer eligible. They've bought the property free and clear because they were eligible at the time they purchased it by being a first-time homebuyer and having the income level at that time.
Okay.
But it would not then, they wouldn't get penalized just because their circumstances improved down the road and they're bringing in some extra income.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Cliff?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation. So, I know that we had some potential buyers, but because of the criteria, they didn't qualify. So, these changes that you've made, would they make those potential buyers eligible?
I don't know if we can speak specifically to the two individuals that expressed interest last round, but in general, it will open up this particular property to a much broader spectrum of income levels. Obviously, we're evaluating everyone on their own merits, and we're taking a lot of other factors into consideration, but certainly, it gives us more wiggle room in terms of income.
Okay, so, you would say that they reflect a much more broader pool of potential...
Yes.
First-time homebuyers? Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Council's pleasure on this.
One clarification on the draft Housing Authority. My name is spelled wrong.
In the handbook.
Okay, so, council's pleasure on this.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion in three seconds? All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you, staff. On that, so, brings us to staff reports. City managers report on upcoming activities.
Have about a half dozen items tonight. This Saturday, Supervisor Canepa is gonna be hosting a health fair over in Daly City for residents in his district. It will be at the Ceremonial Shopping Center from eleven to four PM. Also, our Fire Department, or County Fire Authority, will be doing an earthquake preparedness class from nine to eleven over in the Dolger Center in Lake Merced in Daly City. Brisbane residents are invited to participate in that. Tomorrow morning, eight AM, we will be doing our veterans' flag raising over at the community park, and I think this is the third or fourth year that we've done this, something like that. It's also the one-hundredth anniversary of the end of World War I, for those who are into history. Tuesday, at six PM, is going to be the State of the City Address with Mayor Conway, starting at six o'clock here in the council chambers. Next Thursday, November fifteenth, is the last day to sign up for SunShares. This is a program that provides discounts for solar panels for homes, for electric vehicles, and various sorts of technical expertise. And the annual winter cleanup program, which is one of our more popular programs we provide to the community, is next weekend, the seventeenth and eighteenth. You can see the city's website for the map of where the bins will be, and some of the, many of those bins are dumped during the weekend, and then people have an opportunity to put more material in them. Yes.
Are we going to be offering pickup for residents who can't get to the bin as we have in the past?
We will be doing what we've been doing in the past, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And then, on November twenty-eighth, there is a fundraiser at Melissa's for the, for the library, the Brisbane Library, from nine AM to nine PM. And just a reminder, we know that this has been a kind of a painfully slow process of counting votes, but for those who are interested in staying up-to-date, smcvote.org is where you can get up-to-date election results. The latest one was posted at four-thirty this afternoon, and I believe the next one is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, four-thirty.
Yeah. And if you have complaints about slowness of the process, call Samhitaile County Elections Department.
Okay, that's it. So, hopefully, folks can make it tomorrow to the flag-raising ceremony, and I guess we're probably only going to half-mast and, for the recognition of the tragedy in Thousand Oaks, so... All right, so that brings us to county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports, and who wants to go first? How about Madison and Karen?
Oh, man, I just realized I left my notes in the car. You might want to run and get them, 'cause I had a lot of notes about BB CAG that I think are important. Can I go while you guys steer other? I just don't want to miss anything.
It's mayor's call.
Why don't we just take a...
Public Arts Advisory.
Five-minute break for...
We'll be fast.
A couple-minute break?
All right.
Okay.
That's fine.